Fifteenth meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority to order. We did not, the council did not meet in closed session, so we'll proceed with the agenda. Tonight, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Officer Riggins will be leading that.
Please stand, place the right hand over your heart, or send the position of attention if you're in uniform or service member appropriate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as we begin each of our meetings, we have Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the Council. And just as a reminder, the council's prohibited from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them, brought to us at this time, and according to state law, items first must be noticed on the agenda before any discussion or action. We ask that you, if you'd like to speak, that you fill out a yellow form, or a yellow card that's found near the entrance to the chambers, and if you'd like to speak, to deliver that to our city clerk. And we ask that if you speak, you contain your comments to three minutes or less, and if you're speaking on one of our regular agenda items, we request that you have the cards to us before the end of the staff report. If you're interested in speaking on one of our consent items, we would need the card before we take up consent, because we take all of those items together up at once. So with that, we do have one request to speak. Maria Gravava? Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to request again that the gang injunction that the city of West Sacramento has be rescinded. I'd ask that the council pass a resolution asking the West Sacramento Police Department and the county DA to not to enforce it anymore. I know it has a very long history. The most recent, right now, it has five years that the most recent order was implemented. This gang injunction adds gang enhancements to sentencing, and it also adds and invites direct file. And what are direct files? Direct files is when a minor is charged as an adult. And so the gang injunction is directly impacting the gang enhancement and direct files that youth in West Sacramento receive. Right now, Yolo County has the highest rate in the entire state of filing charges against minors as adults, in the entire state, more than the, than Los Angeles, who has a real, real gang problem. There are, right now, there's 12 minors in Juvenile Hall. All of them are being charged as adults. And I don't know if that's something that we want to be proud of, that we top everybody in the whole state of charging minors as adults. And so please be aware of this. It's an old issue, but it's a continuing issue that is harming lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gravava. That is the only request to speak. Thank you very much. This brings us to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports? Mr. Johannesen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Air Quality Management District met on June 8th. Three items discussed, we went over the, well, the West Sac was, the funds from the cleaner fund for the West Sac electric charging station were approved by the, by the commission. We approved the 2016-2017 budget, which is a 6.5 million budget for the organization. And we also voted in a update to the emergency response management, the emergency response manual for the Air Quality Management District. Sit.
Thank you. Mr. Kristoff?
Just one, last Monday, the River City Financing, Stadium Financing Authority met, and that's Rayleigh Field. Rayleigh Field has got a number of bonds and issues that are, and financing mechanisms that were put in place to make sure we could build Rayleigh Field. And every year, we have this financing authority meet at least, usually it's twice, sometimes once, depending on the various issues. But, and we make sure that there is enough money in what we call the lockbox to pay the bonds. And this is, I think, 14th or 15th year now, and there's always been, lockbox has always been full, and I am happy to report that the lockbox is full today, so bonds will be paid.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. This past Monday, which was the, the 13th, is that right? We had a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District, and we discussed, one of the main items we discussed was around the budget for the district. Included in the budget were some changes, or at least some accommodations, that the district made on behalf of West Sacramento as costs continue to increase in the old district. The city staff worked closely with the district to look at creative ways to help offset some of our direct costs coming from the, coming from the city. So I want to thank city staff for doing that. We maintain some service will make, will make one small change to one, one of our routes, which was one of the least used routes in the area, which we always hate to lose one, because somebody's going to be impacted. But the net result was us saving some expenses going out to the district. But otherwise, the, it did include looking at some additional coordination on the downtown shuttle in preparation for the, the budget included increase of coordination regarding the downtown shuttle for the event center, which is clearly coming into scope as an impact to our city and the, and the district. And we also looked at making sure they had staff to accommodate some of the initiatives we have going with them. So again, all in all, it was a good budget for West Sacramento. Continue with some of our service changes we're seeking, but again, not as much out of pocket for us, so thanks to city staff for working on that with them. Other than that, no other items of note.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. And I'll report on the, the City School Two-by-Two was held on June 6th, and we received an update on the Summer Steps internship program. We actually have a number of interns here with us this evening, so welcome. And we received that report from Assistant City Manager Amanda Berlin, and we also received an update on the Bright Park Phase 2 project that is moving forward. And, and from, we heard that from our, the project lead, and we reviewed a preview on the LRNG, or Learning Platform, from Assistant City Manager Amanda Berlin and Ian Wimbrock, the mayor's assistant. And we also discussed the proposed city quarter cent sales tax with, between the city and school having a discussion about, the school board having a discussion about that. And finally, we discussed West Sac Connect, the app, and how the school district facility input might be able to be added to the app, so that just like citizens in West Sac, if they, if they're reporting on a streetlight issue, or a pothole, or something, that the, we might be able to figure out an interface, so the school district facilities, if they were have, if someone saw something happening at the school site, that they might be able to actually use the app, and then the information would be sent straight to the school district. So that, that was just a discussion as, as an idea. So that is my item, and that moves us to One C, and there are no appointments, or reappointments or removals to be made. And that brings us to our consent agenda. I want to bring to your attention that we received a memo, a substitute resolution for Item Number 3, so hopefully all the council members have had a chance to see that. And are there any questions or requests to remove any items for discussion? No?
Number 3 and Number 10.
All right. Mr. Ledesma, any?
No.
Right. So we will move forward. Mr. Kristoff, your questions on Item 3?
Yes, it's a very important item, because what it is, is there's a development that wants to go in, and they have to pay bonds and put monies up front in order to make sure that they, and ensure that the project can move forward. So anyway, I really like the way staff has outlined this, and I think you've done a great job as far as making sure that the approval of this agenda item coexists with them making their payment. If they don't make their payment, then it expires, and guess what? The development gets to start all over again. Well, they don't want to do that. It costs a lot of time, money, and everything else. So I think that this is a very good way to ensure that everything is on solid fiscal ground, so I commend you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Item Number 10, Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I do, I have some, I have a question on this, and that is if Yolo County, hi, Aaron. If Yolo County moves forward with this, does then our, our sales tax initiative go away?
No, if, if Yolo County were to move forward with a ballot measure, which they're considering on June 21st at the Board of Supervisors, if we adopt this ordinance and resolution tonight, that will, that will be submitted to, for, for the election. So we would, we would move ahead with the ballot measure in November. If they were to elect to put it on the ballot, we could have two measures on the ballot.
So, or could we remove ours?
Well, I don't know if, if at that point it would be too late. I would look to the city attorney.
I think we want to check in with the county. It may not be too late. Typically, once you've submitted it, it's considered a done deal, but it has more to do with the county election staff and how they.
Well, it's pretty difficult for the citizens of West Sacramento to swallow two sales tax increases. And so, you know, that, that's a tough pill to swallow.
Right, and I know, just, just for background information, I know the Board of Supervisors is weighing the initiatives that are ongoing both here, also in Woodland is looking to renew a sales tax as they consider what they're going to do with theirs.
Right. Well, I, I guess one of the major issues for me, and that is, if the county moves forward, are we assured that we are going to get our fair share of the sales tax money that's generated? Because West Sacramento, out of all the various communities, Woodland-Davis, Winters, we generate the most. So are we, is there a formula in place to make sure that West Sacramento is getting its fair share?
So as, as we discussed, I think last time, on the same topic, we, we aren't sure exactly what the county's going to do. There's been talk of both a quarter cent or a half cent. With some talk of if there was a half cent, that maybe it could be done in a way that cities would receive their share based on citus. Now, there's a legal question around that issue of if you, if you make it sort of designated for the cities, does that constitute a use of that money, and therefore, is it a special use tax which requires a two-thirds majority? I don't think anyone has the answer to that yet, and it is part of what the county's going to be weighing, again, when they, when they meet on June 21st.
If I can piggyback onto that question, and the city manager wants to weigh in, and I appreciate Mr. Kristoff's question, but is part of this county's consideration, even if they're going to have it, period, right? So it isn't just, it's first is a yes, no. Are you going to place it on? Because I think your point about Woodland is, they got away two competing tax measures in the county. So it's a yes, no to that, and then the second part, if it's a yes, then I think we want to make, to Mr. Kristoff's point, what's in it for West Sacramentoans and the choices they make about what the tax, the amount of the tax and what it's used for. I think that's, if I can help bolster, so again, I, maybe you have an update, because I know, I think in the last meeting, we also asked the mayor or the city managers to, to be able to weigh in on, on that issue.
Mr. Tuttle?
If I could.
Thank you.
The city managers of the Yolo Cities, the county administrator, is all recommending that the county pursue a sales tax in 2018. Woodland is already, Woodland has to go to the voters in November for renewal of their half cent. With this one, there would be two cities that have a competing measure. As Mr. Kristoff has mentioned, it would be very difficult for people to differentiate between the two, and how are they combined. In terms of what the county would do with this portion, if it's 2018 or, or November of 2016, once they specify that a portion goes to a particular program or jurisdiction, there is that question, does it trigger a two-thirds vote? So we've got a lot of work to do with the county. That's why, at least from a staff perspective, and I know the other, our mayor met with the other mayors of the cities recommending the county table it for 2016, let West Sacramento, if you approve this, and Woodland pursue a sales tax this year, and then we sort out the details with the county potentially for 2018.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
Any other, I think it's an important discussion, and I've been contemplating kind of how we, as a county-city structure, have these discussions, but it sounds like they're, they've been had, in terms of just an initial discussion, but it's, the alignment is pretty challenging. But, you know, we have to be responsible for our city, and we had that discussion, I believe, the last meeting.
Yeah, I just, I just think that we really need to ensure our public of where the money's going to go, and what kind of monies we're talking about, the amounts. I think that's very important for the citizens of West Sacramento. And so, you know, I just, I feel reluctant to go ahead and pass this, and then hope that the county does as the city manager has indicated. But at the same time, if those discussions are taking place, then I think that there are enough issues out there between the county and the various cities that will, in essence, sort of force the county's hand to say, okay, 2018 would be okay. So, I mean, I think that that's the way it's going to go, but I'm, I'm just not sure. So, anyway, but, so I'm going to go ahead and support this agenda item, but there may be a, a time after the county meets that we need to come back and look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Kristoff. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I, I get your, your point, Mr. Kristoff, and I'm, I'm a strong supporter of this, getting this forward, to make sure we make the statement to the county, we're, we're serious about this tax. We want to see this through, we've thought through very, at the last meeting, we discussed, we have, this is, presents a unique opportunity for West Sacramentoans to generate additional money for the government, so that we can service other needs, and as we've talked about. So I, I'm, I think it sends a strong message to help that case. We move forward, and I appreciate your support on it, but it helps make the case that maybe they should table it until 18, and let us kind of move forward, and then we'll, we'll find out where we go from there. So with that, unless there's any other, I can make the motion with it.
Seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, with the amended?
With the amended Item Number 3 resolution, moved by council member, I was going to say Commissioner, council member Ledesma, and seconded by council member Johannesen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. That brings us to Item Number 14, which is a continued public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution 16-48, amending the book of fees for various regulatory activities, products, and services. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Today, we are requesting council to conduct a public hearing, adopt Resolution 1648, amending the book of fees to adopt charges to various city regulatory activities, products, and services. Fees account for approximately 28% of citywide revenues. These fees were last updated in fiscal year 2013. Regular updates to these fees are necessary to match the revenues and the expenses. Included in your packet is a redline version of the proposed changes in each of these fee schedules. It is important to note that the guiding principle to present a fee for change is that all costs are thoroughly analyzed for efficiencies citywide, and also for technological advances, including innovation. There are 24 fee schedules in your packet with proposed changes. Some of these proposed changes are to provide more clarity to citizens on the types of services and match it with cost, for example, if you see under parks and recreation fees. Also, we have a special event permit fees, and the city will continue to adjust this fee schedule as we have more special events now compared to before. Some of the other changes are to ensure that the current municipal codes, regulatory requirements match our current book of fee schedules. For example, if you see under code enforcement, and also under PD for the subpoena costs to match that, what we charge and what the state is asking us to charge. The third type of fee change are related to updating the fees, current fees, to match the cost of providing services. As stated before, is necess, it is necessary to update fees to match with the cost of providing services. Whenever a program falls short in revenue, this could be a general fund impact. These fees were presented at the Chamber of Commerce and also at the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and there was no comments, there's positive feedback. I would like to thank all departments for assisting with this proposed book of fee changes. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any general questions. We have each department represented here to answer any specific questions. Thank you.
And before I open the public hearing, any questions from council? And Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, Nataish, thank you very much for the presentation. The, I mean, the fees look very competitive in the region, in fact, very, very, very competitive in the region. And so the question there is always whether or not we're sufficiently covering our costs. Are there any areas here where it looks like, I mean, I see the water fees in particular are very low, and I assume that we're not covering our costs?
In water, we are doing a water master plan right now. With the current budget, as you know, we are very, when we present a budget, we are always looking at costs. We don't increase our costs as much as some other, other agencies. So with us, with the cost increases, we are able to match revenues. So far, with this report, it looks like we're matching revenues with expenses.
All right, and when you're actually allocating some of these general overhead of the organization into these costs, are you, are you feeling that we're getting, making sure that the matchup is, is appropriate, that we're not, you know, for example, matching services in a particular, in a particular area, because there's not enough fees to cover it? But, you know, basically pushing that cost to some other unit?
No, with the, good question. We actually recently did a indirect cost allocation plan, and part of that plan was to look at the general overhead costs. So the general overhead cost is allocated to each specific areas, including like community development. As you could see, some of the funds, like community development, is running in a deficit. That's because some of the, you know, fees are not covering, or they're working on general fund type activities, so you'll see in some cases, but most of the time, it's covering, the costs are allocated properly.
Right, thank you.
All right, with no further questions, I'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing. There are no requests to speak unless someone wants to speak on this item, hasn't let us know? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation.
I have a question. Nataish?
All right, Mr. Kristoff?
SAC Regional, in, I believe, July 1st?
Yes.
Is going to increase sewer rates by $3. I realize that that's not in our, in essence, in, in our book of fees, but at the same time, it will reflect monies from West Sacramentoans that are in sewage issues. Does that get put into the book of fees, or does that get put into the sewer rate structure?
Yes, so part of the analysis of the sewer rate master plan and the rate structure is to look at the SAC Regional treatment fees, and which is the $3 increase, and then our fees is, is the collection portion. So it's part of the sewer master plan, but we don't put SAC Regional's fees in our book of fee schedule, because we did this agreement with them that they will have their own fees for treatment, and we'll have our fees for collection.
Okay, so when will the sewer study come to the council?
Right now, the plan is to come to council on July 20th with a policy, guiding principles, and then that will help us do the rate analysis, and then sometime in later November or so, or December, we'll come up with the rate analysis and all the impacts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item, or comments? All right. Entertaining a motion?
I'll move the item.
Mr. Johannesen moves, and?
Second.
Mr. Kristoff seconds this item, the recommended action. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. This brings us to Item Number 15, which is a presentation on the Southport Levy, Southport Levy Improvement Project, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Faben, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Greg Faben, Flood Protection Manager, and I'm also joined with my colleague Toby Wong, Supervising Civil Engineer. I'll be doing the majority of the presentation, and Toby is here for both moral and technical support. So as the council is aware, the city and Waseveke have completed three early implementation projects in partnership with the State Department of Water Resources, I Street, CHP, and the, and the rivers. And we are embarking, currently embarking on our fourth and significantly largest early implementation project, the Southport Levy Improvement Project. The project will pick up where the Core's setback levy, or SAC Bing project, left off, and that's right there at the entrance to the Barge Canal on the Sacramento River. And I'll use the mouse to point at the, on the presentation as to where I'm talking about. But it picks up where the Core project left off, and then it continues along the Sacramento River South, approximately six miles, just under six miles, to the city's southern limit. It will replace, excuse me, replace about six miles of deficient levies in their current location with about 5.6 miles of a combination of both new setback levy, as well as some fix-and-place segments. On the graphic, the setback levy is represented by the green line, that's the 5.6 miles, and the fix-and-place segments are represented by the orange color. One of the unique features about the project is the setback levy being set back anywhere from 200 to 300 feet typically, to a maximum of about 5, excuse me, about 800 feet in this area here at the Oak Knoll Bend. It, between the setback levy and the existing levy along the river, it creates what we call two offset areas. These are areas between the, the new flood control feature, the new setback levy, and the existing levy in its current configuration. Now, because the existing levy will be degraded in some areas as part of the project, South River Lo, River Road that currently resides on top of the existing levy will no longer be continuous, so we had to replace that roadway, and the preferred alternative that has been implemented is this alignment here, which is the Village Parkway South alignment. And so this was carried out, I think their contract was awarded in October of 2015, and we're just essentially completing the project this month. This represents Phase 1 of, of our project. And I think, as the council is aware, the grand opening for the roadway is this Friday, 10 o'clock. And shortly thereafter, we'll be able to open that roadway up to the public for, for use. And Phase 2 of the project is the actual levy improvements themselves. And that's scheduled to begin later this year, and will construct a combination of design features that will mitigate for a variety of levy deficiencies, combination of deficiencies such as through and under seepage, slope stability, things of that The levy, because of the complexity and the various geographical differences and geotechnical differences in the soil condition, the levy was broken up into, the project's broken to a number of segments, A through G, and they're labeled on the, on the graphic there. And I'll just briefly go through what those improvements look like, starting with Segment A. Segment A is going to be strengthened in place with also installation of a slurry cutoff wall. In Section B1 here, we transition from the fix-in-place to the setback levy. And we also do slurry cutoff wall and a landside seepage berm. That continues up through B2 and through C, where we have setback levy, cutoff wall, and land. and landside seepage berm. Then in segment D, which is right in here, we have setback levy and slurry cutoff wall. Segment E and F is setback levy, slurry cutoff wall and landside seepage berm. And then segment G is again strengthened in place, slurry cutoff wall and some erosion repairs. And we also have some erosion repairs also in segment C, right about in this location here. The last part of the project, once the slurry, excuse me, once the setback levies have been constructed and are in place, which then provide the new flood protection features and the strengthened in place segments are completed, we will degrade segments of the existing levy, both in the north area here, represented by that red line, what we call an inlet outlet. That'll be degraded to about elevation seven, which will allow the waters from the Sacramento River to flow into the offset area and will, that waters in the offset area will rise and fall along with the, the river level. And then down in the southern offset area, we've created two inlet outlets, which will have a flow-through feature, if you will, in this portion from upstream to downstream as well as sort of a backwater condition here. Again, about elevation seven, will inundate as the river rises and falls. Because of the creation of these, of this offset area, we're able to mitigate almost entirely for the project's environmental impacts onsite through the creation of riparian and other floodplain habitat and also we're able to do a lot of mitigation plantings to replace the trees that are impacted as part of the project. And there is so much floodplain habitat and mitigation created that in fact, it provides advanced mitigation for the future federal project that we're hoping to get authorized later this year. I think statistically speaking, this is expected to inundate and fill with water, if you will, on average about once every two years, statistically speaking with how the river, and this of course is, doesn't take into account the last seven years of drought. But this last winter, we would have seen this offset area inundate a couple of times as, as far as how high the river got this past winter. And again, because of these inlet outlets, the existing levy will no longer be continuous. South River Road will no longer be traversable and again, the, the transportation segment is along the Village Parkway alignment. And I should point out that Village Parkway provides access to the properties that used to gain access from South River Road, now they're gaining access from, from Village Parkway. And I think the last thing I'll point on, on this particular slide is the project in its current design, including the Village Parkway alignment, is completely consistent with and included in the West Sacramento project as described by the general reevaluation report. And so it will be, it's anticipated to be fully creditable towards the future federal project implementation, which is pretty significant. So now we're looking at a close-up view of the north offset area to the left of the screen or just off the screen to the left is where Bee's Lakes is. That yellow segment here is the access road that, that comes from Village Parkway to provide access to the Sacramento Yacht Club. And if you follow along the offset area, the purple dash line here on the right of the screen, that represents the inlet outlet. And there's various contouring and grading that'll be done to create flow paths and unique features within the offset area. And I think most significantly, and it's not, it's kind of hard to see here, but there's a small purple line here that represents drainage facilities or drainage swales that allows for positive draining of the offset area. So when it inundates, then the waters will, as the, the, the river level lowers, the waters will flow out of the offset area and that way we avoid first, excuse me, fish stranding and ponding and, and other things like that. This here's a sort of zoom in of the south offset area. Again, you can see the two inlet outlets at the southern end. So we gained both a flow-through condition, again with these drainage swales, and we also have this sort of backwater condition on the upstream side, again with these drainage cells, lots of contouring and what they refer to as, well, I'm going to mess this up, heterogen, heterogeneity, which basically are these little curvy bumps and stuff. So again, positive drainage, avoiding fish stranding and there's this discontinuity between, of the current levy. So this is sort of further zooming in on a cross-section of a typical offset area. The levy segment to the right is, represents the existing levy and you can see by the red dashed line of the elevation that the current levy, typical current levy is in and then as it moves across, it sort of represents the landside elevation. So the degrading will take place in the offset area and that width varies anywhere from 250, 300 feet to as much as 800 feet like we talked about in Oak Knoll Bend. On the left side of the screen is the new setback levy where we have both waterside O and M corridor, we have nice three-to-one side slopes for the levy itself, we have the landside seepage berm and then an O and M road on the landside toe. So these represent all of the features that will be constructed as part of the setback levy. And in this area in between is where we're creating the various habitats, floodplain, riparian, shaded riverine, and this is where the majority of the mitigation plantings will take place. Because the existing levy will no longer be considered part of the, the project levy system, we can degrade portions of this. We can also do planting without fear of violating the Core's vegetation policy. We can also plant on that remnant levy, creating additional shaded riverine habitat. And this is where all that onsite mitigation is taking place and also the mitigate, the excess mitigation that will be eligible to be applied against the future federal project.
Mr. Faben, would you like questions along the way or at the end?
Either way, and if they're specific to the graphics, it might be easier to do.
Okay. Mr. Ledesma, I believe, has a question.
Yeah, if you can go back, thank you, Mayor Protem. So question about, and I think you sort of answered it, the new levy and seepage berm. Because under federal rules, we're not allowed to plant, have any plantings along those, correct?
That's correct.
And so what, will their construction still be soiled? What will the, what will there be, the construction would be dirt?
It'll be dirt and then it will be typically hydroseated with native grasses that'll be mowed and so for soil stabilization and things like that and, and maintain much like all the rest of the levy system is.
And the seepage berm will be, continue to be, I guess I recall that it had to be a certain composition of dirt or just a kind of a pad that you can't build on, right? Or anything around that, that berm, correct?
Correct. That's considered part of the levy feature itself. It's part of the, although it's a seepage berm, it's actually, the toe doesn't exist until you get to the landside O and M corridor, the actual toe of the levy, technically.
And that was, that will also be constructed of dirt and maybe wild grasses on it, whatever else?
Correct.
Since we're asking questions, I had one as well. The inlet outlet that you showed earlier, would that affect the navigation of the Sacramento River at all? Do we have to be concerned about that?
Let me go to the next slide. So this next slide shows sort of cross-section of where an inlet outlet may be constructed. So you can see where the existing levy is. So this does not encroach any farther into the existing flood control system or the river, so it's just a degrade in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. While we're on the slide. So the red dotted line, you know, shows where the existing levy is and where it's degraded. And really we're zooming in here on the, so the engineered apron, if you will, in that inlet outlet to ensure that there's no, to minimize or to prevent erosion. So there's choir fabric and netted juke this and some other technical things that Toby can feel free to chime in if he'd like. But it's put in place there to prevent erosion as the waters flow into and then out of the, the offset area. And again, it's hard to tell on the graphic, but this is right about elevation seven and we would anticipate, again, depending on how wet our winters are, that waters would flow into and out of this as the river level rises and falls.
Is this, is elevation seven, that's the, is that the kind of baseline level of the river on an average basis here?
Yeah, it doesn't represent a high watermark. It's not, it's not a low, it's like, like an average winter water level.
And in the northern part of the levy system, there's completed Army Corps-
Correct.
-project, they had a, some setback levy-
Yes.
-there. Is that at level some, because what I didn't see was a lot of this, when the, when the river got high, I didn't see a lot of, I didn't see that area flood. I saw it water creep in and creep out. And will this be different than that or about the same?
Yeah, the, the recently completed project by the Core, I think their outlet elevation is roughly 14, 15. So we'll be a little bit lower than that.
Okay.
So real briefly on the construction schedule, as I mentioned, phase one, the Village Parkway South is substantially complete. Got the roadway grand opening this Friday. Just a few minor punch list items remain that can take place, but taking place this week and then also probably a little bit into next week. And then we may also see, you may see it this week and you may also see it a little bit next week, the utility relocation by PG&E is taking place alongside this corridor here as well. So the phase two levy construction, like I said, we'll go to award a contract later this year. The year one construction will consist, consist of borrow activities and construction of the setback levy. Year two, we anticipate completion of the setback levy and start the degrade and contouring in the offset area. Year three, we would wrap up with the fix in place and the remaining contouring and grading in the offset area and then we would degrade and create those inlet outlets. I also have on here years four through nine mitigation planting and five-year establishment period. So we will be awarding a separate contact, excuse me, contract to, for the mitigation plantings. This is a very different animal than levy construction. And we will have at least a five-year establishment period to ensure that those plantings take root and grow. And so we will be actively managing that area through O and M to ensure that that, those plantings get established. Continuing progress, so as with any of our levy improvements and, and the levies themselves along our riverine corridors, there's lots of recreational opportunities that exist. And although there are no direct recreational features designed or constructed as part of the project, there certainly is the opportunity post-construction for recreation activities to be factored into that, that template. So we're forming a team of internal, internal stakeholders. In addition to reaching out to the various commissions, we've been to the Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission with the presentation on the project. We've been to the Planning Commission for a similar presentation as well as the Parks Recreation Intergenerational Commission and received lots of valuable input on the possibilities for future recreation, some very creative ideas. And we also want to ensure that we, through this team of internal stakeholders, that we coordinate with the Parks Trails and Master Plan Update as well as any of the current bike, bike pad master plan and any future updates to that. So we'll be exploring those recreational options and I would anticipate that some of those ideas and things will be brought back before the council for consideration. And then also with South River Road, as I've mentioned a number of times in the presentation, the, the existing roadway will no longer be traversable. And so when South River Road needs to be closed is something that we're taking a look at. The contractor will certainly through the bid process provide a proposed construction schedule and phasing that will, in their opinion, dictate when the road needs to be closed to facilitate construction. But reaching out to the public and, and closing it in, in a manner that is the least disruptive or provides for easy turnaround or the folks don't get too far down there and realize that they're in a tough spot and have to turn around and get back. So again, we're forming a team of internal stakeholders, including police, fire, Public Works, pretty much just about every department in the city, to take a look at some options that we might be able to, be able to present either during the bid process or to coordinate with contractors either during or after the bid so that we can approach that in a responsible manner and the folks aren't real surprised about when this, when the road has to be closed. And with that, I'd like to open up for whatever general questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Faben, Mr. Wong. Also, it appears in the staff report that you're looking for some recommendations for us in terms of potential post-project activities. Is that, is that still helpful?
Yeah, I think certainly if we have not outlined, you know, the type of continuing dialogue that we're going to be having with stakeholders, we'd welcome any feedback and suggestions you have on things we might explore.
Great, thanks. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. Good presentation, good summary of what, what's happening down there. So the, one of the main attractions of this area is the river and right now, South River Road is really used heavily, even though it's kind of broken up in a lot of places. So my concern is, I mean, I'm glad you focused at the end on this, on the Parks Plan and the pedestrian plan, but in terms of the crest of the new levy that's on the riverside, are there going to be, or what limitations will we have of the use of that during the entire stretch of the levy?
So one of the things that I, I just realized and neglected to mention during the presentation, so there's the two access ramps that there's, two that will be created. I pointed one of them out, there's also one south of Bee's Lake that is more in closer alignment with the marina that's on the southern end. And the segment in between those two ramps of South River Road will remain in place and remain a city roadway. So there will be segments of the old South River Road, both north and south until you run out, until you literally run out of ground at an inlet outlet, that there may be opportunities for folks to be able to traverse the existing levy. There will be, for areas that are degraded where it may not be safe, especially in high water, we will likely have gates across those areas. But certainly there will be the ability to walk through and/or bike through, you just won't be able to get too far. And certainly the segment in between those two access roads, in between the two marinas and, the marina and yacht club will be accessible as well.
So is there a reason why the entire stretch of the crest of the levy can't be open to bicyclists or walkers? Why does it have to be fenced? Any particular, I mean, are there actual gaps in the levy where you have a ravine?
Yeah, there's actual gaps, it'd be like ravine. Now, on the new setback levy, that's continuous and that will be traversable from, from north to south, all the way from the existing South River Road configuration, all the way across the top of the setback levy to the southern city limit. So although South River Road or the, the crest of the levy in its current location won't be continuous, the new setback levy will be.
All right, all right. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kristoff?
Just, just a couple of comments. First of all, this is the largest project that the city of West Sacramento has ever undertaken. By the time all of this ends, it'll probably be a billion-dollar project. And that's with a B. One of the other benefits that, that we are going to be going through as outlined by Mr. Faben, and that is FEMA and the flood insurance rates. By completing this project, it goes a long ways towards keeping our flood insurance for the city residents, keeping it down. So that, that's a very important item to at least bring up and let the people know that the tax dollars and the things that we are spending now are really going for good causes. And I mean, I think that there's going to be not only the safety of our residents and our homes and our businesses, but also the reduction of flood insurance, the additional kinds of recreational opportunities that Mr. Faben has outlined. And so, I mean, I think that this, this is really a big thing. This is something that I think the community is going to really embrace and I really look forward to- And I really look forward to the completion of this stretch because this is one of the touchiest stretches. And a couple of reasons is because with setback levees and all the other things that you heard Mr. Faben talk about, there were homes that were within that area. And those homes needed to be relocated. Those homes and their properties needed to be purchased. And so we're, we're still going through all of that. But we're going to try to be as fair as we possibly can and keep our community as safe as we possibly can.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on SAFCA, too. Wasafca. Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, and thanks, Mr. Kristoff. You went exactly where I wanted to go, which is to emphasize the size and scope and scale of this project. It's, it is a big project, and we commented this a few meetings ago. We went through and talked about the specific project, having to approve a report that was going through. But a lot of this work has been in works for years, right? Just in the amount of work to get to this point from the lobbying that was done to get the credit, federal crediting in place, the early implementation. Taxpayers voted to tax ourselves, so we, that, we had something to bond against early. Just a tremendous amount of work by the entire community to get us to this point. And the great part about this presentation, it's all been very theoretical on where we're going, where, you know, we're talking about the legislative arm of this getting the funding and the work West SAC Flood Control Agency had to do to kind of get the bonding in place, to get, it's been all theoretical. Some exercises, Mr. Kristoff pointed out, on their end, to kind of get ready for this. But this was the first time I saw, okay, here's, we're getting ready to break ground. And I think Friday is the roadway. Because that's, that's really what I'm keen in on is we're starting to also, you know, the other part of this construction is readying our residents for the impact and the questions about what we can expect over the two- to three-year period of construction, right? And there's always a nervousness. I know when we did the Army Corps project, there's always been a nervousness about rainy season's coming and are we going to have the adequate flood, is it going to be ready when the rainy season comes? And so those questions will come. We started to see that phasing out. And I just wanted to make sure we, as we're getting input around, around what to do with the uses, what all, the area, which we'll get to in a second. It's just important, keep an eye out, to make sure we keep the public very aware of kind of what the impacts they can expect. And that slide you had, the kind of the Year One, Year Two, Year Three, starts to lay the groundwork for that. Like, we're going to expect truck traffic, we're going to expect South River Road to come down. Because people do use that quite a bit, I think, Mr. Johansson brought that up. People are using it now because of the McGowan Bridge is open. They, I do it as well. I take, I go east on London, get on the South River Road. And so you, it's a way to bypass Jefferson, ease up traffic there. And when the Village Parkway opens and the approach onto the McGowan Bridge, the north side is ready, that will bring that opportunity. But it would also, its main function is to bring equipment and trucks and folks working on the levee down to the south area as well. So we just have to keep people appraised of that activity. It's going to be a very important part of it. And as far as, as far as the setback levees, I appreciate you kind of, I was really interested in kind of understanding the new levee system and its composition and how it will fit into the landscape of the, of our current, of our south port area, which is one of our biggest assets. We've been identifying that area for some time as sort of the gateway to recreational activity and trails. And that's one of the, the Trails Initiative is something that our Parks Director is keenly aware of and focused on. So we have to get that part right, right? So once, once we, I'm glad you're talking to folks and reaching out to folks about what they see the uses, the commissions, whatever else, because that would be a network that the whole city should enjoy, as well as the region, coming down and bicycling or using it for, I think I heard one suggestion was having disc golf going on down there, which, again, you have 120-something acres now of kind of open space that will be maintained and utilized. And it's just important to get that right so all the residents can continue to enjoy it. So I appreciated this, this report very much because it's like, again, it's sort of put into very, very specific terms. It's, it's time to start getting ready for the construction and seeing what the real plan is for, as we put shovels in the ground. So thank you for bringing the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. And I, too, want to thank you for the report and for keeping this updated on this. I think it's really important for all of us to know the status as it's our top priority in the strategic plan, as you know well. And I think because this project is so, is so interesting and has, as Mr. Kristoff said, has such a large impact, it's not only flood protection, but it also provides the recreational amenities. I think I appreciate what you, what is going on in terms of getting the outreach and getting the input from the commission and other, other interested stakeholders. So we, I look forward to continuing to be updated as is appropriate for us. But this was incredibly helpful, so thank you. All right. Any other final comments? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to, there's no action on this item. That brings us to item 16, Council Calendar. Ms. Brule.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. Here are a couple of dates that might be of interest to you. As Greg mentioned, on this Friday at 10:00 a.m. is the grand opening of the Village Parkway South roadway. And the festivities will be down towards the intersection with Gregory. So parking and activities will be down at that end of Village Parkway. And then next week, on Friday at 10:00 a.m. is the grand opening of the Joey Lopes Park. And invitations and more information on that grand opening will be forthcoming. And then on June 25th, that's Saturday, there is the Law Dogs Police K-9 Competition. And that's at River City High School, and it starts at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Manager Report. I believe you have something to share with us this evening.
I do, but I just wanted to acknowledge staff. I know the levee project is a huge source of pride for Mr. Kristoff, but I wanted, he had a heartburn a few years ago when we had so many staff circle in here. And Greg, Toby, Paul Durst, Mark Solo, and the department heads, Charlene and Denix have all kind of been stable. But Greg's just done a great job on his leadership on this. And there's, there is huge multiple benefits that we talked about tonight. I also want to introduce our new traffic engineer. Denix left, but has long sought a traffic engineer. And Rafael Martinez, can you raise your hand? You don't have to come up and give a speech. I just wanted to introduce you. Finally got a great traffic engineer, and we expect great things from him. So welcome, Rafael. You'll see more of him in the, in the future. Wanted to mention a couple of events that Amanda has, in the past, has talked about on the calendar, Off the Grid. Started last Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. They had 1,000 people out there, no problems, a very big success. So there, as if you recall, that goes each Sunday through October. The Police Department's working with our park staff and the school district on a program they call Summer Night Lights. The plan is to start that July 2nd at Bright Park. I believe it's 6:00 to 10:00 each Saturday night through the summer until school starts. So as those details get fleshed out, we'll make sure you're aware of that. And then we wanted to close, at least my comments, with a video that our Summer Steps interns, a couple of them produced in regard to John Vincent's memorial off of Jefferson.
Well, I do the 9/11 field every year. And one of the things I've learned over the years is when a tragedy happens like what happened in Orlando, people like to have a place to go and, you know, just to talk about it and reflect on what happened. And so I decided that it was big enough that we needed to have something out here in the field for the terrorist attack in Florida.
Thank you for sharing that with us. It was beautiful. Thank you. Well done, interns.
And the video, it was posted, got it on eye lights. It got a lot of favorable comments. It was up for one day, and Mr. Vincent and his volunteers did a great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to publicly thank John Vincent for doing that and for staff for accommodating that request to put that up. It is purely a community-driven spirit that John had. He does that every 9/11. And the community has embraced that little spot as sort of a memorial spot. So I want to thank him publicly for doing that. And it was a solemn occasion for us, but I appreciate him providing a place of reflection and healing for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. City Attorney Report. Staff direction from council?
I do have one.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, let's see. It's Bright Park. Couple of months ago, some citizens came in and asked for an accounting of where the monies were for Bright Park. We had, we had a pot of money and it's sort of set aside for Bright Park. And I know that we used some of that money for a restroom. And I think we might have used some of that monies for the Kaboom Park. But I haven't seen anything that gives an accounting of how much money was spent, what was it spent on, and how much we have left.
On the groupie money?
Yes.
Okay, which was not dedicated to Bright Park. We can bring back an accounting and a status on the groupie funds if you're interested in that. But we don't have any funds set aside for Bright Park. We have for recreation in the north area. But we could bring back if you're, if that's what you're interested in, is a status of the groupie funds.
Okay. And the status of the groupie funds.
Exactly.
So. Okay, it's, yeah, because we can get an accounting then off of that.
Perfect.
Right.
So I think that that'd be appropriate.
And the City Manager did, I asked for a letter on that, I think, back in March, I think it was. And I do have that, so I know you can grab it pretty quickly. So I, so, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mr. Ledesma, any other staff direction? Agenda item requests from council members? Anyone? I have one. Earlier tonight, when we were talking about the sales tax item, and I know Mr. Kristoff brought up the concern, and we had a discussion about the Yolo County tax, but it would be helpful, and this perhaps is Item D. I don't know if it's D or E, but to, for us to be kept abreast of what's happening at the county, I think that would be incredibly helpful. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you, good evening.